This is a special meeting and each of us will have a term to read that. So why don't we go ahead and start with the town council roll call. So Theresa, could you pick your roll call please?
Captain Martin, please.
Here.
Captain Martin Lillard.
Yeah.
Captain Martin Lemper.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeGolias.
Yeah.
Mayor Lemper.
Here. Our district.
Director Collie.
President.
Director Jones. Director Bernstein.
President.
Director Magwala.
Here.
And Director Swanow.
Here.
Okay, so.
Yep, more on it.
The next item is our flags to the flag, but there's not a flag here.
Yeah, unfortunately we don't have a flag.
Okay.
Do you have any insignia on your...
No, I'm in. We go outside the flag. Okay, we'll get that. Okay. All right, so are there any public comments at this time for items that are things that are written on the agenda?
On or off?
On. That's beyond the agenda for a special meeting.
I don't think Mike's on the agenda, I hope.
As long as it remains on the agenda, Frank, you can go. Special meetings after items on.
You know, I've met with the town council several times on this subject, but I have not met with the fire district. So it may be new to you that might bring it up, the subject of security in the schools in Atherton.
Great, would you just leave it to Mike?
There's nothing...
Or to Mike.
But that's not... If you have to weave that into being on the agenda. Do you want me to do a second public comment? Okay? There's later a second public comment.
Can I ask your permission to do it now slightly?
If the fire district...
I'd like to hear one person.
Please, you agree?
That's fine.
Sure, three minutes, okay? Go ahead. No, no.
You're now, Greg.
Greg, you go now, three minutes, please.
Do you want to use the timer?
You're going to the light.
He was going.
Oh, okay. Okay, Rob is so tall.
He's getting cross permission.
Is it working?
Yeah.
Yes.
As I was saying, I've spoken to the town council several times about this subject, about adequate police protection and fire, for that matter, at the schools. And I've done some research. I spent most of the day reading a 450-page report on the Marjory Stoneman Douglas School right outside of Miami Park, where 14 students and three teachers were killed and 17 were injured. And if you read the report, it's sad because in a lot of ways it could have been minimized almost completely. It wasn't because of a lot of different reasons that are in the report. But I think, you know, the Florida governor, who's now a senator, wanted to have a ratio of police officers or resource officers per thousand students. And, you know, he started out with one per thousand. And in Atherton, with nine schools and 9,000 students, that would be nine police officers, which I think everybody would suggest that's probably too much. But I think if you look at the time sequence of the events, in this case, it was six minutes. If somebody would have gotten there in two minutes, and there was a police officer there on the side that did not act. And, but if reinforcements would have got there in two minutes instead of five minutes, I think it would have been also helpful. But I'm just saying, I think to be... To have a two-minute response would probably be what you would need to be sure that you were there quick enough that you could ever do something rather than get there after the fact. So I'm proposing, as the city of New York has yet, setting up a foundation where both the school district, I mean, the fire district and the town of Atherton would share in establishing the foundation. And we'd make it a nonprofit foundation that would allow residents to also contribute as well as those two entities. And I would be willing to take the lead in helping make that happen. So, and I talked to the police chief a couple of times on this issue, but not in any detail. So I think that if both of you, the both of your reports were receptive, that the fire district and the police chief and I could spend some time getting more detail on it and bring it to you as far as cost and timing. And I would think we could do that probably in a couple of months. We could do it sooner if it was probably urgent, but I think since there's nothing on the agenda that I'm aware of now, what I'm aware of probably, it can wait that long. So I guess I'm proposing that you consider that and I'll leave it to you as to whether to do it or not. And my three minutes are up and I do hope you do something. I'll tell you, reading that report today was very disturbing to me personally, so I wish you luck. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments for items on the agenda? If none, then we'll close public comments and go to item one on the agenda, which is discuss the major report. So, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the board and the board and council. You all have the written part one and part two of the study as part of the package. And there's others over there at the table for interested other parties. And it's on the town's website. I'm sure the fire district's website as well will be able to link. I'm not going to go into detail. You guys are going to do most of the talking tonight. But for a little bit of background, in fiscal year 1314, the town was putting together a local municipal services webpage that we hoped would design to advise and inform residents about the various services and service providers that they use as residents, basic information about each service provider. When putting together that webpage, a question arose related to the property tax revenue received by the fire district from Atherton residents. Initial research indicated that perhaps the revenues that were collected via property taxes exceeded the actual cost of provided service. The council wanted some clarity on that issue. We published the webpage, but we sought to clarify the data with the district, so we asked for more detail. There was some correspondence back and forth between the district and the town. Around that same time, the district had updated an analysis of their property taxes each from HBL for fiscal year 1516. And the district noted that they received approximately 11.8 million in property taxes from Atherton residents after UAP. Atherton represents about 31 point something of the district's revenue and about 8% of the service population. Still, the council wanted some more specificity around that and commissioned a study to answer at least three initial questions. What revenue does the district receive in property taxes to residents? What are the actual costs of the service? And what would the cost be if there was no fire district in town or able to provide the service on its own? First question was essentially answered by the district's HBL report noting that only 48 million revenue. Because that number over the years, just like regular property taxes, is expected to increase. The second question required more analysis by Matrix Consulting, the details of which are in the task studies. But basically, the cost was estimated at about $4.6 million per year. The third question addressed the costs if the town itself were responsible for providing services and there was no fire district. If the town were to provide that service via contract, the cost was estimated at about $7.4 million. If the town were to have to stand up its own fire department, that cost was estimated at about $6.8 million. But there is a large upfront cost for startup, assuming they start out from scratch, that was around $14 million. That was part one of the study. Part two of the study, after the council had a couple of public meetings on it, asked, and given that current situation, what options are out there if the council and community wanted to address them? How would we go about doing so? And this is where Matrix Consulting had looked at a number of case studies, most of which were in Southern California. The bottom line being that there were no reorganizations out there that exactly matched our set of facts, as one might expect that same scenario. But in general, based on the efforts that are out there, the town could pursue one of three options. One was detachment. One another was to look at some sort of tax agreement. A third was to look at some sort of special legislation. The LAFCO option of detachment was discussed in greater detail in the study. There's also the option of tax agreement of some sort. These have been pursued in other agencies, but for various different reasons, not identical to the town situation. And the last option was to pursue some sort of special legislation within the state. And those case studies, as were indicated in the report, have very big reasons of success. Robert Finn from Matrix Consulting is back there in recent hand there. He helped put the study together this year to answer any questions that the board or council may have on specific methodology or even case studies that they put into the study. Part one and part two were completed to provide the council with a framework for conversation around the issues and weren't designed to identify or select a specific solution or even recommend that steps. This was the first opportunity since completing the studies to have a joint conversation with the board and council on the issues. And it's hoped that through this joint conversation, options might arise for some deeper discussion. So with that, I'll turn back over to Mayor.
May I be going? As the council has gone over this before, why don't we start with the fire district and see if the fire district would like any additional information on what George has gone over or questions on the report from Matrix? So. I have no questions. Let's go to the board, once again.
I was just going to say that I sort of privately provided comments to council, Atherton Town Council members that were not discussed at all in terms of the fire board itself, although some of the concepts there were discussed in our finance committee just in terms of observations that we have about the nature of the study and so forth. But you all have access to that. If you don't, I have extra copies that I'd be happy to give you and you might like that. The fire district itself, either through the finance committee or as a committee of the whole, did we actually comment specifically on the report?
So, no questions sent from you all on the report or where the data came from or how it was determined or methodology used or anything like that?
I'm opening it up for questions. I mean, this report situation has been ongoing for the last couple of years, so I don't know if Mike, since you're the head of the board, if you have any questions or comments on this.
You know, I read the report when it was initially published and read it again over the weekend. And I don't need questions by all of you.
Any Atherton council members have a statement?
No, please.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay. I'll look at Chief, since he's our expert, fire district. Consolidation of fire services would make a lot of sense on a day within the county and so forth.
Depends on the agencies, depends on how it's done. I used to probably more in favor of consolidated services. I think what we've seen in recent years is agencies, even cities, become self-serving in what they do. In other words, taking resources out of the system. And while the district has maintained or increased its level of service, others have decreased their level of service based upon consolidation. So it's a mixed bag. It may work for the entities that do it. It doesn't always work with a blended system of automatic aid as well as it did before.
So there would be mutual aid and mutually. That would be a specific agreement between the concurrent jurisdictions that provide public service?
Correct. We're in two automatic aid agreements, one with the city of Palo Alto, which does not include EMS, first medical services. We're in a countywide automatic aid assist system and agreement that terminates mid-year, which we're going to have to look very closely at. And we're mutually agreeing with the city of Fremont, specifically for the Depp Art Bridge. But the reason that occurred was because Fremont, interestingly enough, when you were consolidated with Albean County, Fremont switched from automatic aid to mutually, which is exactly what recently happened to the city of Palo Alto when they changed their system with the city of Mountain View. So when agencies feel as if there's not reciprocity within their system or there's going to be a net negative, then typically they move from automatic aid back to mutually.
So it's basically a voluntary aid?
Yeah, it's contractual, too.
It's contractual between the public safety agencies?
Right. And I think primarily what I've seen mutually for those that don't understand it is it doesn't happen automatically. It means that when the request comes in, if the entity who would provide services to the other entity is not able to do so, then they don't get help. And so that's how it works.
So I'm trying to ask any questions. So there's no requirement, let's say if Atherton created their own fire agency, that our fire district would be required to respond if we couldn't?
There would be, you'd have to make a decision more than likely how it would work, because most entities will pick between mutual or automatic aid agreement. So there's some form of assistance and then the parameters of how that would work.
Well, let me ask the district, just to clarify, are you asking me to choose between auto aid, mutually aid, and nothing?
No, I'm asking the chief.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to...
No, because part of this Metro study involved auto aid and mutually. And I want to show the point relative to that nothing is required that Revon City or Woodside or any of the other surrounding agencies have to respond to an incident. And that was one of the recommendations by the Matrix. And I just wanted to bring that up by our expert, which is the chief. Let's say that there's an issue with that. So just for a point in progress, it's a common tactic on all jurisdictions to have mutual aid and common aid. Isn't it auto aid agreements with member jurisdictions? You guys are not creating an anomaly that you guys don't want to do. It's not unusual to have mutual aid or auto aid. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm just trying to clarify because everybody here might not know that. It's a pretty common practice with, that buddy jurisdictions have agreements.
Right, but it sounds, just so I'm understanding what you're asking, but it's a choice.
Yeah, it's a choice. It's a choice, but in different means. But it was... Excuse me.
Sure.
Excuse me. I'm sure you can read, but...
Of course not. I will.
I'm sure you will. Premedical component that we have in San Jose County?
Yeah, the U.S. J.D.A.
We are a member as the other agencies are, correct? Atherton doesn't have a seat on that, do you?
No, the district has a seat to receive for all jurisdictions that have that.
So any of the ambulance services that are obtained through Atherton, they do not have a seat at the table relative to ambulance response, correct?
The town is not, Atherton doesn't pay for ambulance services. We use a district.
Right, AMR. It's a town-wide, but you...
Right, but that's my point. We go through the fire district. Well, the point is that through AMR, we are the representative for pre-medical. So I don't know how it's going to work if you do choose to separate from us as a fire district, how that's going to fall into play as not having a voice on the pre-medical group, which is the ambulance service in town. So that might be an issue. I have some other questions for you. I saw in reading in the Daily Post that there were two council members that felt that detachment was not a good idea for the fire district.
For Atherton?
Yes, correct. So, thank you. I'd like to know if detachment's on the table here. Because I've asked on many meetings, who cares about what Atherton generally wants out of this? And I know, which was represented by the post, that there were two council members that felt that detachment didn't make any sense. And I'd just like to know what the majority of the council feels. With that...
We just want to ask if you want to respond or do you want to just keep going?
Well, I have a bunch of other questions. Do you need to go and answer questions? Okay, because then Elizabeth would like to ask. Sure.
I want to.
Oh, you want to respond. Chair, can we just get all the questions down on the table? I think it's in the back end. If you want. And I think that the hard is stopping. Well, we're spending about an hour, no more than an hour on this. And then we will stop on the Matrix study because there were several issues or items of discussion that the fire district gets us and we want to make sure that we spend equal time on the two items that they brought up. So an hour for the fire district, two items, and then now we only have one. So big one, and there's been a lot of discussion back and forth. There's been a lot of discussions by a citizen director.
It's not yours, sir.
So. Can we want...
We didn't touch the bar.
You've gone, okay. The Matrix consultant, have you ever heard of San Jose County?
The federal court.
Several times.
Have you worked in San Jose County? Are you familiar with Net6 and other, you know, with the auto aid, mutually aid agreement? I'm asking, with San Jose County, have you worked in the San Jose County? The different metrics, dispatch, CAD, or anything like that? You have?
Where the council?
Excuse me? San Jose County, San Jose. Have you worked as a licensed seizure officer, firefighter?
No.
No, you haven't? Okay, thank you. All right. As to the detachment, the Matrix study, chief, did you see any inadequacies in the Matrix study?
So we did an initial cut before we reported back to the board. And as you know, the board, we decided that, you know, rather than commit staff time, we're not going to commit excessive staff time looking at this at this point as of what forward, nor are we going to engage in that. So we did do initial cut and we looked at what Matrix had put together and the chief longens here in the audience worked directly with Matrix, provided them, within a timely fashion, everything that they had requested. They're looking at about a six-month period of time. We got a quick look at the final report when we gave the report submitted to the council. Again, the board had to make the decision whether or not we would comment. We chose not to. At a staff level, we looked at it. We saw some inadequacies in it, I will say that. There were things in it that had related to pension, pension costs, legacy costs, hours separate, training, training hours, how that would be achieved with a two-station department. Where currently, every day, we have training, we're taking two engine companies out of service to accommodate service trainings based upon their types of requirements firefighters have, specifically the paramedics. You know, a huge burden outside of response and readiness or probably our next largest thing is training. We spend many thousands of hours every year training our personnel, whether it's probationary, driver, command and control unit, and wild, like all those different things that we do. Chief Shaver said that last year we spent 28,000 hours conducting training for our personnel. So that's a huge thing that you have to accommodate for. We didn't see, I think, to our level, what we would expect, that a realistic metric was there for that. And again, assuming that personnel need to be trained, you couldn't really find that in there. And equally, when it came to units being out of service or medical calls going to the hospital, that wasn't necessarily being well-covered in there either. And as you mentioned, the expectation that it would be automatic aid from district stations would be an assumption because it could be mutually. If that unit wasn't in the station, then there would be no assistance from the district, at least from that facility. So, for the quick look, I mean, we have a difference of how we would have come up with cost. We didn't put cost in there. We didn't do any great in-depth dives because the board at that point decided to just have the time to do it.
Mr. Mayor? I have nothing else. Okay. I want to ask you.
You know, I do have a question. Did the consultant examine any liability that the town might incur, any pension cost liabilities that the town would incur if detachment were to attend?
No, because in different ways you look at detachment. But I believe that to the consultant here, he could comment. So if you could comment on a couple of things. One, you know, your background, the background of the team that worked on that, since that was a public question. And then discussion on that.
Well, I'm famous in the industry with Matrix Consulting. I spent 25 years in public safety here, both with the fire chief and the Dallas Fire Metro Place. And I stayed consulting with Matrix. Project team had two former fire chiefs on it, as well as our financial analysts to look at the various issues. In terms of the pension liability, that wasn't the scope, in the scope of this body of work because there's no recommendation for detachment or which option the town may proceed to go with in terms of the later financials. The recommendations are that when the decision is made for the financials, then it would be needed to really determine the exact extent of the costs.
And estimate. Yeah, go ahead. For if detachment were pursued as an option, those things would be...
Yes, there have to be several financial components. One, how the financial impacts are involved for the town, what the financial impacts are for the district, and to make sure there's no disparity of costs in terms of the district currently being to maintain service levels and operators as they currently do, to ensure service levels can be maintained with the loss rate. So those are your options. That would have to be further studied in all of the direction of the town processes.
Are there other significant financial issues that are resolved other than the pension costs, training, training hours?
There would be in terms of facilities and equipment.
Of course, I mean, and in a lot of those are identified in the report.
Right.
Are there any that are not included in the report?
The largest one is how the issue impacts the district. That was not part of the scope of work. It was just Atherton and their side of the study. But if detachment was an option in the LAFCO study, there would have to be a full financial forecast on the impact to the district and what that would be if the detachment. And that would be a part of the process for their...
Great, one more thing as I'm thinking about it. So fleet services was in there, too. A lot of people don't think about, you know, it's the backbone, it's the unit that's ever spawned, whether they're, you know, they're in for service or something happens or there's some type of warranty issuing. The directors are very familiar with some of the frustrations that we've had with some of the apparatus situations over the years that we've had. We've had one last year that was out of service half a year, going back and forth for repair or maintenance until we finally keep up with it and now it's better. But, you know, these are complicated pieces of equipment, so keeping them running, that's what we have on fleet services division. Others wish they had the same or downtime and less. Many, many are looking for places to get apparatus repaired. So that's, that's always a constant, dated, you know, issue for us as we're managing part of it.
I suspect there is a training, chief, that really wasn't stressed in the Matrix report, how many hours of training, what truck stuff would be out of service?
Yes, as Mike said to me earlier, 28,000 hours for last year. And it depends on what we're doing, the different days. We'll have two units that have seven out of service and for training, because they need to be trained. That means the other units are covering, so we're covering different areas based upon that period of time. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Well, I think what I wanted to jump in and kind of respond to Director, so I don't know about that, was his line of questioning as kind of a host of innovation to certain other directors and other achievement. To the extent that and drawing... To the extent that, and drawing analysis that there would, that, not only the fire district, if Atherton did a detachment or other form of fire services other than the fire district, that they would just not provide neutral aid. I mean, the technicality is, you know, if you don't, so they're not going to cross the line if a house is running down and you, you know, fire services. But when, in fact, I believe firefighters from all over the county would, you know, rally to save lives because that's what firefighters do. To kind of put that as a kind of a big, correct, yes, scare tactic to us, is really unseemly. And I don't think that that's what we're about at all. And the other thing I wanted to question is, we're all talking about detachment as if that equates, maybe I'm mistaken, that equates to us creating our own fire district, a fire station, a fire department, you know, with training and equipment, instead of maybe joining forces with other existing fire districts or, you know, existing fire departments. So, I just, that, I think, is yet to be fleshed out. I mean, I don't think we've really defined what the word detachment is. Thirdly, I could have been one of those, I don't remember what Post article you referred to. I don't recall recently being interviewed by the Post about this. So, maybe it's some archive where we said, you know, gosh, we're really happy with the service and you don't want to detach. We just feel like we're funding two-thirds more than what, you know, we're receiving in services. And there seems to be some kind of inequality there in just looking at the numbers that, that seems to be... And the numbers just keep going up because it is a formulaic equation. It's a percentage of our property tax earnings. We get maybe eight point something percent of our property tax earnings. The fire district gets like 13, 14 percent of our, I mean, you get more money than we do to run our town. So, I think that that doesn't feel so good, and I think that's why we kind of want to figure out how we can do something different.
So, yeah, so Rob, to echo on what Elizabeth was saying. Now, first off, we started doing the study because some of our residents had asked some questions. And as we got more information, we were interested in really understanding how much really is paying. And then again, with the question, well, you know, versus the service and what the rates are for other organizations and how large those organizations are, and how do you call completing the other jurisdictions? So, we were just surprised, as I think many of our residents were, on where maybe there was a disconnect. And are there questions on if something were to happen? For sure, you know, as has been said, I think in all readings that some people, so most of the board members that actually attended, across the board, every council member said we have the service. So, we get, the Menlo Park Fire District, it is top class. No question about the service and not any dissonance about that. There was discussion on, you know, what steps can we take? One of the steps is detachment, yes. But that was, you know, to, I think, to a person, we said, hey, you know what? We're not interested in building our own fire district. I mean, if we were to build our own fire department, obviously, some of the issues would be, we'd have to go negotiate with you and the county and certain pieces of equipment that you had for our service, plus people associated with that, might actually be assigned to us with their pension liabilities. I mean, that's kind of how this type of process might work. So, I think that some of the questions that Jimmy, you brought up, I think they're excellent questions, and they're things that are downstream. I don't think that we're having those type of discussions. What we wanted to do was go over this and make sure that y'all understood where we were. I'll have to ask questions like you're doing, not, you know, have confrontation per se because we haven't made any decisions on it, okay? Guys that followed this thing fairly closely, some of you have been at, as I said, several of the meetings. And so, I think that, you know, we need to maybe raise a level of discussion over that, that it's not a confrontation, okay? I realize that perhaps some of the rhetoric that has been thrown at us has been confrontational, okay? And that's a bit unfortunate. But we wanted to have this conversation, and we wanted to have this conversation with your new board. As we discussed when we had our special working group and said, let's try and at least have the conversation with the new board and try and get things back on track the way it used to be with the old, okay? But our question is, and our comment is, is that we do think that there's a disconnect in the amount of money that each jurisdiction is paying based on the service they're also receiving, as well as, you know, the disconnect of providing the cost, whether it's right or whether it's wrong, okay? There is a disconnect, and so that's what we wanted to at least discuss. So, now that kind of hopefully levels the playing field here.
It's from my perspective. Oh, I can usually speak very loudly over here. But so, from my perspective, I think that we do hear a lot about specifics in the study, but I think there's really no question when you pull back, but that Athens residents are committing more revenue into the system than they are taking back to cost their services. And if there's disagreement about that, I'd love to hear it. I don't think there is, there was a lot of potshots in that, at the study, and a lot of discussion about what that delta is, but that delta exists, and it's fairly substantial, however you look at it. I also think that the way the communities are developing, that that delta's going to grow because the communities are very versing in the nature of the community themselves. When you look at the amount of massive developments going on in Menlo Park, these Palo Alto's are getting developed, and Athens really, our community's not changing in that way. And that does change the nature of the fire services we require or anything else. So, I think those are, you know, fundamental points that we shouldn't shy away from. I also think that there are sort of three options, big picture, we could look at and discuss, which we have. One is just continuing what we are, just as is. Another is to, we have talked about the possibility of detachment withdrawal. And another is some kind of discussion about whether there's a way to approve the services or the level of, you know, commitment or revenue into Atherton. And for example, the question about, you know, gosh, we'd love to have a small engine located in our new town center. And the answer to that was no. I understand now you're not planning to close one of the stations in Athens, and that's nice. But, you know, those are the kinds of conversations that could be had. From my perspective, I don't think we know where we're going. I don't think it's that productive to potshot the study if you can, and any comments are helpful, which we get as good as we are. But if there's a disagreement that Athens residents are not paying a higher level, pay more money for a level of service than others in the county, I'd love to hear that. Because I think I've never heard anybody say that's the case. So, you know, if we're there, then we should have a conversation on what's left and whether it's possible over time, in a cooperative way, what our options are. I know that there's a sense that our options are valid, but maybe they are, maybe they're not. That's probably what we're looking at now.
Great. So, I wanted to come off of what Mike said. I think that it's very healthy to lay it out that there's three options. I think that's the right way to look at this. And in response to what Rob brought up, you know, the Athens council's never voted on the issue separately. So, I don't know where the Post would have gotten the information if the Post got it. We never voted on that issue.
It was in yesterday's paper.
Whatever, I didn't read it. But we didn't vote, I'm telling you, we haven't voted on that issue. It's just wait, listen, it's never come before us. The only topic that came before us was whether to do a second aspect of the study that would look at what the options might be. And that came out as one of the options, but we've never taken a position on that. So...
Well, thanks for the clarification.
I believe... Yeah, I believe that the healthy solution for this is to pursue the third option, which is to talk about, you know, I don't know, is there anything of value that we could find from this study and the concerns that were raised by our residents that initiated the council to pursue that study? And I would propose that the best way to do that would be for both of our organizations to set up a subcommittee where people can sit down, and an ad hoc committee, maybe two members of each board can sit down and talk, come up with some ideas. Because frankly, I haven't heard, I mean, I've had some discussions with a couple of you about ideas that I think would be great to formalize that and just explore what is it that we can do that would be better. Personally, I have no interest in detachment, and I don't think the council is interested in detachment. It hasn't come before us. I didn't agree with Post, but... But I think what we need to do, and where we went astray last year because of one member of your board, in my opinion, I think what we need to do is come back together, just like Bill said, and try to, you know, build on the common ground that we have because we obviously have overlapping jurisdictions, we're a part of you.
I'd like to address Mike's comment, and I think the idea of keeping this non-confrontational is absolutely right. I think there should be a cooperative opportunity. I have some other issues with district's finances, which I have been in the minority complaining about. But let me just say though, I want to comment on your question about the study. We keep repeating the same conclusions. I don't believe that the conclusions are entirely warranted. Let me tell you why. In the Matrix study. First of all, the study really never looked at what it was supposed to look at. That is, what are Atherton residents paying for service? It only looked at the location of a particular call, whether it was in Atherton or Menlo Park or Palo Alto. The fact is that Atherton residents have no reason to go to Atherton other than to go home. If they want to go shopping, or if they want to go see their doctors, they're going elsewhere. They may be having heart attacks elsewhere, they may be having traffic accidents elsewhere. So, and we don't check IDs for every call or anything like that. So, we don't exactly know how many Atherton residents, we just know the location of the service, the geography of the service. And that may not even have been an Atherton resident who received the service in Atherton, although there's very little reason for non-Atherton residents to go to Atherton as there are in the other cities. So, I mean, that's one flaw. We don't know, we don't know exactly how much service residents got. The second thing, you could also say something like, Atherton residents per capita are paying a much higher cost for fire insurance on their homes than people elsewhere. Because there are some things that are based not on a call, but on the risk that a call needs to be made. A lot of what we do is potential, we're there when it's needed. But if it's not needed, there's still a cost to it. And I see that because for fire insurance, if somebody's home is worth a million dollars, they pay a certain rate. If somebody's home is worth $10 million, they pay roughly 10 times that because it's based on the value. Atherton residents are paying taxes based on evaluation of their property. The risk to their property is really kind of in a linear relationship to the value of the property. So, in some ways, to take a per capita look at things is really not looking at the risk to that. The risk for an Atherton person's home is higher than the risk to say a Menlo Park resident's home. It's a different case. If a fire occurs, the loss is much higher. So, I think to take a per capita look isn't entirely accurate. You need to take a per value look, what's the risk to property?
Well, I think that's one of the things, Jeff, you can get amazing good points. One of the things that I think Rick brought up at one of our earlier meetings, that when the, not necessarily that we're paying the same, the same amount of our property tax. Yes, our property tax is higher than the business, perhaps in other jurisdictions, depending on the size of your home. However, look at what the share of the city's allocation of the property tax for that fire service. So, yes, we're all paying a certain percent to, based on when we order our homes and things like that, as defined by the county. But then the county did use the money up in order to support the Prop 13 rules. And when Prop 13 rules were set, things were different than they are now. Over the last 30, 40 years, different jurisdictions have specifically evolved, become more denser, have brought in more jobs, expanded, okay? And so, if you look at the amount and the percentage of the city budget that a jurisdiction is paying now versus then, and what we're paying, you know, as Elizabeth pointed out, the amount we're paying to the fire district is more than what we get to run the town and keep the streets.
Can I get a clarification here? That cities or towns have a different revenue source than fire districts. Fire districts strictly have property tax and then...
Yeah, I understand.
Towns, they have, I don't know if all of your residents necessarily know that, they have sales tax, treasury tax.
We don't.
You don't have, because she decided as a group not to have hotels, to have...
Economies.
...store. But I'm saying is that the split was determined by, you know, what everybody's revenues are and what other ones the district does not have.
I mean, that's true for any special district. Right, special districts rely on a lot of property tax, pretty much, like at least 90-plus percent.
So, to Director Bernstein's point, the total, if you look at the assessed value for Atherton, is 10.9 billion.
Is that property damage?
Correct. Of obviously what is registered, that's not what's insured.
Or the county's information.
Correct, what we're getting taxed on is 10.9 billion.
And it's not a mistake.
We didn't work that one out.
Well, that would be interesting because guaranteed it's more than that.
Well, but I mean...
It means it's how often more than that.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes. With the... Oh, wait, I had all those, but it's not...
That's true.
So, what's a recon about the insurance rates? That, you know, that obviously Atherton residents owe paying higher insurance premiums than a property than a simple family in Menlo Park? That's very simple, honestly. However, that's because the damage could be so expensive. You know, so it doesn't correlate with what we're talking about with the funds that are given to the district. That's not a good, it's not a good correlation because I preused that example. I just don't see any basis for it. So, maybe I'm not getting it, but it just doesn't seem like, it's like you're doing apples and onions, you know, in that kind of comparison. And so...
You play with that issue?
There are some areas in, in our town that, that do, that are in the floodplain, I think.
Almost have, I think, of, of, of what I'm saying, if you restore the area, neighborhood, neighborhood of the city, the, the insurers, it matters in terms of how many people play it in relationship to the value of, of property and rental. So, so if you look at insurers, what area here, your insurance would be much, much higher than what it is right now. But not all of that goes that way, but most of these are off the coast. There is some level of correlation going on, where, where you live, the, the disaster that, that payment that decided requires.
Understand, and so I just don't see how you correlate it with...
Insurance companies aren't setting fire rates.
It's not a correlation.
Cost per service is not a correlation by fire.
I mean, it's a fact of life.
It's a fact of life.
But it's not a correlation for the discussion that we're having here today.
Sure, absolutely. But would you say that I, I, it's not absolutely clear to me that per capita is the way it's going to be there? That's, I was trying to make that...
The other point I wanted to make about what you were saying is that, that the crimes being in Atherton, that you don't, you know, for sure that, or that an Atherton resident has any crimes outside of Atherton. Do you know how many community people we have driving through Atherton every day? There are hundreds, thousands of people that have nowhere to stop in Atherton except to drive through, okay? And how many accidents, how many fire calls are within the bounds of Atherton because of those accidents? Because of the Alcoa, because of the Atherton Avenue, the Sully Lane, and Stockbridge, and the Alameda Elks, and they'll look right there. So, you know, that reasoning doesn't make sense here. And so, it's not just per capita.
I, I want to finish, oh. I, I want to finish another point about the study, though. To, in, in no way, in any threatening way, this all precedes even the study. I, for one, have been very concerned about how much we've been giving away to jurisdictions who don't reciprocate. And it's something that concerns me, and I think one of the reasons our costs are higher than they should be in some ways is because we give too much away.
Could you elaborate on that?
For example, we have neighbors behind Stanford as part of the county. We respond to their fires. San Antonio County, no response to us. They're not contiguous with us, we don't, we're not next to them. We're providing service to people, we're paying them a tax for that service, and we're providing it. And I take the position, and I'm in the minority, but that we shouldn't be doing that. Another example, Redwood City, when economic times were more difficult a number of years ago, they closed a station in the southeast corner of Redwood City, the one close to, well, uh, that, that, yeah, but near where all that new Stanford developments go down.
So, who did they mistake for that?
So, we responded to their calls. They were able to cut their budget, and we're paying for that. And I, I want to say this has nothing to do with Atherton, but I have been very adamant that we shouldn't be doing that, that everybody needs to pay their level of effort to serve us. Now, the flaw in the study, in my opinion, was where the consultant said, well, as we look at this, we can only respond in a timely manner to two-thirds of the city. So, we'll just let the fire district do the other third of our city under mutual aid. That isn't fair either. And, and, and my argument was in the paper that I gave you, if the city had to, if, if Atherton, the town had to open a third fire station, now it's much more costly. And I was just pointing it out, not in a threatening way, but simply to say, it's not fair to say, we can't do it all, so we'll rely on you to give it to us for free. But that's not appropriate.
The Virginia, I, I want to, it's almost six. Okay. So, I'd like to just make a closing comment and suggestion, and, and I think it would be worthwhile for us to have six minutes of feedback on, on public comments, and then we will transition to your item, if that's okay? I don't want to monopolize all the time, but I think I need to give some public comment.
Okay, but I, I want to get through to Ron, do you have something to say?
No, I just, I just want to say, I'm glad we got the detachment off the table. And I feel better about that because we serve other communities than the fire district. And if Atherton did detach, it would not only affect Menlo Park, it would affect areas of the county, and would affect DPA. So, I'm glad we got that off the table, and I want to apologize if I was confrontational with that, but I just wanted, because it, as that paper says or whatever, that's always been that, that elephant in the room. So, I, I'm glad to see that detachment is a part of it. When you first started doing your civic center, I was...
I haven't said that.
No one said that.
No one has said detachment's not an awful word. She's like, we said that here. Never occurred.
Don't, don't just leave the public here.
But you said that. So, I, no, no, that's fine. I just wanted to throw that, you know, it is what it is. The aspect, Rick and Mike brought up a good point, sharing projects that we can work with. We've done the, the crossing over there of Amidra, Menlo Park, we've done the crossing, direct cross from Station 1, and I think there are other projects that we can work jointly with. I was an advocate when I first came on this board, when you first, with your civic center, wanted to put a, a squad vehicle or smaller vehicle in here and house out loaded. But I think we should work on those types of mutual projects. Unfortunately, Proposition 13, 1978, I was driving a motorcycle with my family, so I didn't have anything to do with that. And I'm sure everyone else here in 1978 had...
I see.
But, and consolidation is... 1978?
So, Rick, so, I guess I'd just like to make my secret note that we established a subcommittee with two persons from each board to explore, just this is more complex than...
I think we already have one, and I was going to say, you know, why don't we continue the discussion and, you know...
We have that informal committee, but I'm not sure what kind of structure you would want in any committee, that would be informal structure with a liaison. So, do you want something more formalized, Rick, from a fire district perspective? I think it's only fair that we would also have other members of the public from the other jurisdictions, since we have to look at things from a district perspective as well. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, I, I personally feel that the issue that we're discussing, and what we can do, what we can't do, what next step there might be, is between the two of us.
Yeah, but the, but the...
And so, I'd like to continue the discussion like, like we had started, we've had now three meetings. And if we have a conversation, the fire district is going to like to take those back to members of the other jurisdictions, that's their business.
So, you, okay, so if y'all want to keep the informal structure that we have with the liaisons, then, that we can continue to have those working rooms without a formal structure of...
Well, to something, Rick is...
Yeah. Well, no, I know, but it sounds like Rick wanted to establish...
Well, I don't think that subcommittee has ever talked about this. And I don't think it's on an agenda to talk about it. I would suggest that we have a subcommittee that's, that's civically commissioned to talk about it, so that we don't have something...
Well, my, as a, from our side, I think the subcommittee... Here, I'm listening to something that you all have too. I thought I heard someone, one accountant or other, that, that we are, out of three options, we have no idea what we want to do. That's what I thought I heard. And it just makes more sense to me that there needs to be a per capita part before we can kind of really have an idea of what, how to help in Atherton. As long as it's still an area you're not sure, moving down the country to the next year, I think the important part is kind of decide which direction we need to go, or want to go. And then, plus, we have a conversation around that direction. So, we can weed out a lot of this conversation, and then that is certainly important on the decision that you have already made on this direction.
If I could on that, I, I hundred percent could. Wish I could agree, I don't agree with that at all. I think that our, the, I think the issue is, we don't, the reasons we don't know, I think our preference is stay in the district, our purpose is to work cooperatively, to get more resources in Atherton and work like that. But if that, we don't know if that's going to work or not. Thus far, I think we've been, there've been mixed results, probably not that light, which is great, by the way, and very one is an example. But there's a lot more I think we might talk about. So, we don't know whether, whether we should be considering withdrawing, you know? We don't know what, you know, how we're doing. So, I think we couldn't tie our hands by committing ourselves to something without knowing what the options are. I think we have to continue to explore the options, and as we learn more, it'll inform what we did.
May you help me, I think that would be everything, but I, I think the options, as I understand, that there, there were three, and I think you brought it up, and within those options, the only thing that's one that really sticks out to me that, you know, something stuck in, something stuck in the throat, is that, 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 that three percent that, that only there, four, probably there was six, six tax being taken out, going to Atherton, and 13% going to fire. It, it seemed like that, that is the, kind of the bottom line of, what seems to be the real issue. And, and how much, how, how much more of those dollars go, should go back to, or be retained by Atherton? I, I think it was a number that we can't give you because, because there's a formula that's set, is set, those numbers, the formula, the dollars are set, and then we're in that formula. If there's more of that that you want as a, as a pound, then I'm not sure if, if the district, again, helping out here, and making, putting up a payment, the district don't set the formulas. So, so how we can help in that, I'm not sure. And I think that, that's why I said getting to that, that direction that, that you want is only going to come from you, especially when you're taking a facility, how those numbers are formulated. And I think it's a valid point, during how much, how much, how much service do we actually provide to you? I think it's a validation if we're not providing the level of service to you, and which I'm not, I haven't heard of, or not. If we are, then we need to figure out what that is. Now, how did it cost to go with that six percent increase in, in that number? I'm not sure how, that's a correlation that I don't, I don't see.
Through the chair, just, just for clarity, since I haven't said anything, for clarity, we had no idea, you guys haven't had any input on this, and, you know, the chief said it, this is our first, I think, but, so, in all due respect, unless we heard your input, if we walked into this already with a philosophy, what our direction was, we have no idea. You're, you're our experts, and therefore you guys could have given us, you know, 100 things that we should be considering, that frankly, all of us want to consider all of your points. So, therefore, I mean, if it boils down to just a certain financial issue, that's still a whole nother Pandora's box to, we still have to, at least, consider the concerns that you guys have raised, and consider with Matrix. If there is some other extension of the formula that we need to get, or we need to consider an option, I think that that is, before a equitable treatment of what to do with the money issue, you know, we really have to consider, period, to try to trust not to do that. So, I think that's where we are at this point in time.
Not to put words in your council member's mouth, but what I understand, your position and your point is very well stated, is that can we, maybe it's just not strictly financial money that, for, but is there other, are there other things that the fire district could do in, as an investment in Atherton for fire services? Maybe you've been...
And the examples would be, you know, like the light loop in front of the station, which helps the Atherton residents.
That was very helpful, that was great.
I think, you know, on the flip side, it would have been nice, I think, to have a, a small engine, a new civic center, that could respond and hopefully do things. That's an example where, you know, the district could have put a little more resources back, and would appreciate it greatly, and it would, you know, changes that whole equation without further to the, the way that the legislature divides up. And by the way, it's not copper teams, to be clear, it's a legislature divides up property agencies.
So, Mike, I can just help you understand, y'all are specifically looking at the civic center...
I think our committee, we get together and...
No, I know, but I want to just get it out there, we did buy that council on Almidra to expand or deal with Station 3, because we know that it was a good opportunity, there could be other opportunities. So, are you saying that that's, there should be more than that? I'm not, no, because it sounds like it was very specific to the civic center, even though you've invested in...
I'm excited about that, and, I thought the Almidra purchase was a great part because of what Chuck mentioned earlier, I think we were concerned at the possibility that you, with logic, want to start pulling stations away from the edges of your district for fear that you're responding in Redwood City and responding to other places, the way Chuck referred to earlier, the financial dis- incentive equipment to do that. So, I thought that the Almidra purchase was a way to put a stake in there, I said, no, we're not, I said, that was great.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure...
But I think, I think Bill's point, which I think he's about to make, that we should get together and talk about other ways we might be able to do that.
That's what I think you say, and, and in closing, my, my comments on that, I would like to take with your, we're now in your time, okay?
Do you want to make one of the...
I think it would be nice to have, you know, several, hopefully, I think Cory Moss's team, that's a mental choice, but, uh, public comments, please hold your comments to, to three or less minutes, and if somebody made a comment, obviously, if you want to repeat the comment, that's fine, but in the interest of time, it would be nice if, I think the agenda is public comments, we can end the entire meeting, if that's really structured in the agenda.
Are we, or could this committee, and, and Atherton wants us, on our next meeting, to discuss?
You mean our fire board meeting?
Yeah, to discuss this...
Well, it's basically the liaison, so right now, there are two liaisons, there are two men lead for Atherton, and I don't, and I'm assuming it's Carrie and Bill or y'all are liaisons for Atherton?
We'll have to discuss that, okay? Uh, here, here, the mayor assigns the subcommittees, I'm sure the board, the board president...
We have our liaisons already.
Okay, all right, well...
He may want to, he's the mayor, he gets to choose.
I didn't have that...
I mean, he might.
I might want to have two representatives.
No, no, no. It has to be...
I know that, I know that.
Okay, so we're going to have public comments on this item at the end of the meeting in the public comment section, that was excellent, I think. And so, the next items are the items that the fire district, very important items, they put on the, on the agenda, and so, why don't we turn it over to the fire district?
Yeah, so we, we've been discussing high-sky emergency response routes, what we call primary emergency response routes, for a long period of time. The district has those designated. One of the things that we see as a challenge is that the other jurisdictions haven't necessarily adopted those or said, yes, we should incur. I think Atherton's done a really good thing in not having traffic control devices. I know that's, you have a whole, you know, we work with, you have a whole policy that allows that to occur, and it's not an easy thing for it to occur. I understand residents want those things, but then, those can slow response time. So, you know, five stations in the district, seven directly respond to Atherton as part of their area. I don't know if you realize the amount that you're looking at, you know, where's the benefit that the district's going to bring to you? Station 4 is one of those right now, we're looking at rebuilding and maybe configure and adding more resources to, so that's a liability to deal with, or to develop, right? So, on the routes, one of the things that's come up aside, I know you started a study on El Camino, didn't have the funding to continue that, I'm not sure what's going to happen in the future. You know, we both, eight entities have a tenant lease to the county on Middlefield Road, and it's desired to reduce the number of lanes to three, or essentially two in North Fair Oaks, which is going to have a dramatic effect on our ability, I think, within the town to respond to certain areas, depending on the time of day, because we know there's going to be backups, so we created because of that. You know, the other one that you just had a presentation on, which was count train, high-speed rail, and the number of rail crossings, you know, we really... speed rail, and the number of rail crossings, you know, we really haven't had a chance to discuss if Menlo Park truly in fact is going to move forward with three under crossings, they're going to raise the rail bed, I don't know how far that goes with Atherton, if there's any discussion for Atherton to have under crossings as well, because if not, from what I've understood, maybe I'm wrong, but they're going to start limiting the number of crossings across the railroad tracks, which then creates a problem for both the police department and the fire department in terms of the number of resources we have, their movement, where they need to be, and how do we get around. So, you know, again, as we're looking at our primary routes, probably going to have another discussion with the board, certainly hoping to have it with the councils as well, and have the councils adopt those, so that if you don't have any routes, traffic control devices that, to the whole of the community, affect response times. And I'll give you an example, you know, whether you realize it or not, when the county made the decision to put four control devices on, by Station Five, which responds to Atherton, also on Fair Oaks and Fifteen, there's four devices between the station and just Middlefield Road, every one of those reduces the amount of, you know, reduces the response times to your district, but nobody ever discussed that with the town of Atherton. A lot of those things have occurred kind of myopically, in not looking at how the district responds, I went back and looked at some of the news articles that, twenty-some odd years ago this was created, and that's the only station currently that we have, that we have not purchased property next to, and there's a reason for that. It, it just doesn't make sense where the station is anymore, hasn't for a long time, but to move it is equally difficult, do we go towards Marsh Road, or do we go towards North Fair Oaks? And maybe it's North Fair Oaks only because on Fifth Avenue, there's another crossing, and what's the future going to be if we build a facility and suddenly they close, you know, crossing over Fair Oaks in Atherton, all of a sudden that relationship between Engines Three and Five does not exist anymore, and one of the things that gives Atherton during good response times is, again, five stations, which means five different locations units come from, there's only one station in the town, but equally, you know, response times is that you don't have in many areas, most areas, control devices, you have nice long boulevards, which I know isn't easy for APD and traffic control, and speed, and all those different things, but works real well for the fire district and for people on, you know, normal driving around, when it's not peak commute hours. At the same token, you know, again, what's going to happen with El Camino, Alameda, Middlefield, you know, all those different things impact traffic within the town, and equally now, the rail, from what I understand, the rail crossings, the amount of rail traffic is going to impact our response times in the future. So I'm already looking, and we have discussed it at our staff meeting, and we're looking at a similar problem we faced below Highway One-O-One in East Palo Alto and East Menlo, actually moving over to now this side, between One-O-One and railroad tracks, between the railroad tracks essentially, and Highway Two-Eighty, which is our areas, and a lot of that area we share, obviously, the town of Atherton has areas, has different areas, and all of that, the town exists, and that's, you know, you're asking, what are we going to do, what are we going to put, where are we going to put more units and people to accommodate those types of problems? So, you know, that's what we're working on, and I think maybe part of that clarity for the council would be, is we need to do a better job of telling you, you know, what we're buying, what we're doing it, and also what we're building. The Station Four, sixty percent of its area, I think, is a run line state, is a, so having a station up there that's new, modern, you know, resilient, with more units in it, actually directly benefits the town of Atherton. More, more than, and not, again, not to make you feel bad, but more than a unit at New Town Center, which is only a quarter of a mile away from Station Three, which doesn't make sense, so, those are the realistic conversations that we need to occur, it's more the greater good, because I see traffic and these issues as the greater good, I mean, our units are moving all over all the time, and I'll end with this, you know, we're, as I mentioned, we're the, we're the cusp now of renewing the county EMS agreement, that means that all the other agreements go with AutoA, Movement Cover, Greater Alarm Plan, Public Safety Communication Dispatch. So, you know, I don't think what you know, and Victor Bernstein has mentioned, we can acres, but equally, the district's desire to stay in or out of automatic aid with other jurisdictions is something we're going to take a, a very serious look at, and, you know, it's, unfortunately, you know, as we've seen these consolidations, it's a net reduction in resources. In the South Zone, which was San Carlos Belmont to District Limits, we used to have an additional ladder truck and battalion chief, that's gone, City of San Carlos just got a, got a nice deal for themselves, and they've no longer got to pay for that, and so, respectfully, Rowan City has joined with San Carlos, and San Mateo has joined with Belmont, but net for us is reduction of services twice the distance from Truck Nine to Truck Twenty-Three in San Mateo, there's no truck in San Carlos anymore, so, you know, what does that mean to you? It means resources are coming from further away, and so as we add stations, as we modernize facilities, as we add more units and personnel, what's happening is other agencies are either staying the same or shrinking, and, you know, again, nothing against Rowan City, I understand they have a pension problem, that's not our problem, our problem, problem will be reciprocity, and does it make sense, as we may approach another downturn, when they make certain moves to preserve how they do business, is that something that we accept in terms of our ability, or our desire to provide a substitute service for them? That's something that we're, you know, we're having some discussions about, so, there is no plan to grow the Rowan City Fire Department that I'm aware of, I know that would be something front of the chief would enjoy doing, but all that growth that you saw in Rowan City is not equally the match as what we're trying to do with the fire district. So, you know, again, those are decisions that the board's going to be involved with in the next six months, in regards to what kind of relationship do we have with our neighbors that favors or benefits the fire district, and that's Atherton too, because preserving units means that they're there for calls that we have. We have one unique, very unique challenge, if you look at, and here's two examples, which, you know, I wasn't happy to find out about, but if you look at both six alarm fires that Rowan City had on Woodside Road, because the fire district backdrops against two different counties, there were no resources coming from those entities who tried to fix that, but we were stripped completely empty during a period of time within the buildup to those fires, meaning as they went from alarm to alarm, because all the cover units come from the north to the south, but if you strike another alarm, the cover unit gets pulled into the fire. So as they pulled all the resources out of the fire district, and it was completely empty, the cover units never made it here, so only past the sixth alarm, I believe coming all the way from South San Francisco, did we have coverage back in partage, that can't happen ever again. So we're recreating the system, those are the things that we're trying to figure out, how do we make sure that that doesn't happen, because, you know, I'm sure that's unacceptable to anybody hearing, that's really unacceptable to me finding out about it, but that's the, that's the way the system was created, and so as we go in negotiations to recreate what exists, those are things that we need to fix, that, again, cannot happen ever again, so. You know, traffic, these issues of primary response routes are a big deal for us and for you, and for the people sitting in this room that live there, because that's how we get around, that's how PD gets around, and, you know, equally, when you choose control devices, as someone who's had a broken neck, you know, you don't really notice that right in the ambulance until you're in it, and you have an injury where you don't want to get jolted around. So, you know, whether it's elderly, it's a slip and trip in a hip that's been broken, or a leg, or other part, you know, until you sit in the back of the ambulance as a customer, you know, nobody, nobody hates those traffic control devices more, especially the humps, bumps, lumps, chicanes, and all that other stuff that forces those units to make kind of dramatic or unnormal moves on a screwed roadway, until you're sitting in one of those, those ambulances, you know, how did you go to the hospital? How did you say that as both the customer and the car chief? You know, that's, that's what you think about that stuff, probably more than anybody else, so, be careful as you move forward, even on the traffic control devices, there's ways to work with the district to do that, and ways that I can think are more problematic for us to do.
If I have a question about the train, as we move to electrification, keep hearing that there's a potential schedule where the, the gates are coming down every, I don't know, two minutes or whatever, throughout, through rush hour, is there, is there anything ability the district would have to hold a, a train at the station or anything like that, or are you just going to have to wait every time?
Not currently.
Are you working with councilor, what's the solution?
So one of the things that I've said, and I know that people don't like it, but, solution, I have solutions, I don't know if they're going to, you know, yeah, go live. First off, you know, what, what's crazy is to have a missile coming through here and adding more development right on the railroad tracks, including high density, I mean, that's just counterintuitive, one thing has to go wrong, as we've seen, you can, you can not only have a vehicle get thrown into the building, but, you know, you've got a train derail. So, you know, I understand why they want to increase the speed of electrification, I'm not a big fan of electrification, just because they think it's thirty-year-old technology, it's got to get better way, but, you know, what can, what can we do with Caltrain? We have asked for them to slow the speeds, whether they'll do it, I doubt, because, you know, it's about moving people and timing, right? Could, could we stop a train if we ever only, we can only stop a train if somebody's been hit currently, or if we have more hose lines across the road tracks? That's the only time they would
So I just, if the, if the guards are coming down every three minutes, you really just have to wait until it gets back up?
Pretty much, I mean, we right now radio in if the, if the engine gets delayed, you hear it all the time, delayed by train, they wait, just like D rates. And, and two years ago, when I was younger, we tried to, we went around the, the guards at times, and that almost ended in a bad way when the two express trains, I mean, this is, the one went by, so we started to move, and thank goodness it was a gutless old piece of fire equipment, because if it was one of these newer engines that's faster, we would have been hit by the Northbound Express, and those on Ravenswood, so, you know, in this was probably about a few inches, and that was a lesson we never forgot, so, you know, I don't, we don't advise that to our person, like, we, we don't allow them to do that, to go around the guard, so they wait for their own safety, but equally, you know, that's the law.
Chair.
Yeah, I'm with Chair.
Chair. So, Chief, yeah, I think that you clearly are, you know, made aware that two thousand twenty-three is going to be a big target number of Caltrain. As far as emergency response routes, I think that the town itself has been very concerned related to traffic congestion and response routes, but related to the district's overall picture, I'm not quite sure that the brick and mortar concept of building all these fire services or chasing what I will, ways of movement of traffic is going to be an effective approach to try to capitalize on traffic jams and traffic congestion that is really a moving target, and you guys are moving very heavy equipment at very high speeds, and we've had this conversation at a little level related to police cars and code three response, and I think that, in my opinion, related to the district response resources to potentially move into, and I know firefighters may not like this, but more into a congestion management deployment, do the analysis, try to have that target as a moving target to where your resources, for example, your eastern resources based on the two thousand, two thousand and fifteen, there's four units over there, instead of having four units coming from stationary position, move your four units, spread them out, because you're going to have a better response and shift to move based on that response, you have four units there now, and in the central portion where the rail component would come into play between rail and VCR, you have a sufficient number of units and actually probably older deployment of units that could be moved or even moving and shifting into the resources within the park. So I think that the, the cover component philosophy of moving your engines around doesn't accomplish, never accomplishes the moving target of all the traffic, and I am in the traffic all the time, and I, you know, daily, I know this used to work yesterday, it doesn't work today, ways doesn't help me, but in a philosophy of trying to have, one, reducing the exposure to the district and moving the fire, because you famously have that video going down Willa Road, I don't know why you'd ever go down Willa Road the way that you guys have had to go down Willa Road, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, move that, move the unit when it comes to congestion point beyond the thread, and, you know, I'm not quite sure if the county comm system works like my Channel Two news in the morning where it shows red, 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 I don't know if it's that good, but it could be, and maybe that's something the district should be looking more in a direction of maybe a higher and better quality system that can do a better analysis of the roadway, so you guys can move instead of creating the brick and mortar, because nobody knows, we never knew five years ago what was going to go on in the eastern section, and now we're all, ooh, and it's not going to get any better, so, and roadways, we have the limitations of what land use is, and nobody wants to say we're in a mental name, so, so, it just kind of, congestion, looking at everything, it just kind of becomes out, and things have to change, you know, fire stations are nice, the police stations are nice, but if we had a response component from the police station, and our response times got extended because of traffic, and they were responding to the police station, we all would have a conversation, you're not, you know, deployed or saturated, we've had some recent burglaries, saturated areas based on a needs assessment, and so we move as well, so maybe that is really a concept philosophy we need to change to combat the frank moving target.
Can you, Mr. Chair?
I have a comment, I want to reinforce what Mike said a minute ago about this train issue, I think whatever we could do jointly to change the direction of that is worth doing. Every jurisdiction that cares about the value of that land is going underground, we see it in San Jose Park, we saw it in San Francisco, in Chinatown, this idea of, oh, it's so expensive, nothing is going to be more expensive than what's being planned out, we spend a zillion dollars on these crossings, and it's not, it's still not going to be sufficient, and it seems to me that tumbling, both of our jurisdictions, I mean, Menlo Park and, and Atherton have relatively narrow waistlines there with the tracks, and it seems to me that we really ought to be exploring doing that. I go one step further, that is, I think it's worth looking at undergrounding a portion of El Camino, not completely, but for all that traffic coming out of Stanford, if we could send through traffic underground and send it as far north as we possibly can, it would benefit everybody. And, one, one more point, and this goes back to this issue of, how could the fire district use its resources to benefit its constituent communities? I think one of the things that I would like to see us looking at, and it's pretty, it's somewhat far afield from our main mission, but congestion reduction by addressing school transportation, it seems to me, in the morning, the estimate is that school transportation of parents is about thirty percent of the congestion on roads, and it's the easiest transportation problem in the world, everybody's going to one place or two places, I mean, and if we could somehow figure out some ways of funding, I think it would make a huge difference, so, I think this is something we should be discussing, I, I urge the chief to not give up on this and to try to make the point, unfortunately, some of our higher leaders, this AVAG thing, that they've just decided on with this CASA and so forth, is just going to exacerbate the problem, you know, let's do more, let's make it denser, let's go higher, let's put it all next to the railroad tracks, and, no, you can't take the train anywhere, I, I looked at the ridership things from a year ago, I think in Menlo Park, there's only, if you figure everybody goes round trip, there's only thirteen hundred people who get on a Menlo Park station all day long, it's, we're going to just, we're going to create problems for thousands of residents so that thirteen hundred people go somewhere? I mean, there's just got to be a better way, and I, I, of course, I think it's the jurisdictions, not us, that has to say these things, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Barrier to the future, where are you discussing?
One-O-One, we've got an extensive program on the north side of One-O-One to beat that area up because of the added industrial development, and then we have the train outlet, where we have the other side of that park, that south side, so it's kind of between the train and One-O-One, and that's where we come into Atherton, that's why we need these shared projects, you know, maybe we have the Fair Oaks Station, we have Station Three, you know? You know, maybe we have the Fair Oaks Station, we have Station Three, you know? It might be beneficial to build something else between those two natural barriers, between the train tracks and one-on-one, because it's so hard to get across now, north and south, maybe that, so. And secondly, as a fire district, we don't have traffic enforcement, and we don't write tickets. You know, our surrounding jurisdictions do, these call up the Menlo Park and Atherton, you know, they have a police traffic, they, tickets you can't as a fire agent. So we can't control the selective enforcement aspect of no return, going through red lights, blocking intersections, so on. So, I can see us working together to deal with those natural barriers, the one-on-one and the, and the train tracks, and the extensive traffic problem that we have on Willa and March. Thank you.
No, I mean, I think that Kerry brought the point of having, or I recall like a flex unit or rapid deployment unit, which we've actually had some discussions about, you know, where that would be in terms of taking on peak traffic issues. And so the district's been looking at that, you know, even something even smaller than a rescue vehicle that we currently have, just so it's more maneuverable for traffic, and so it goes well primarily handling these calls, which is majority of what we do. You know, we're preserving, quite honestly, the other units, so if there is a call for a fire, those engines aren't necessarily tied up on a call like that. So there's been some discussion about that as well, just so you know.
Well, my concern's always been primary response routes. And I've talked with Kerry about this too, especially on the Alameda, because there was task force that's been dealing with the sand hill, Alameda, that Y issue. And I just can see the unintended consequences, the backup is gonna go into that part of West Canal Station Four, all the way to Bosco Meadows further down. And so why big concern is making sure that we have enough of, enough clearance? I don't know if there's another better word for it, is access to that. I mean, I just think of, you know, I mean, it kind of goes to item number three, you know, Walsh Road can be an Atlas situation, right? It's one way in and one way out. And not just Walsh Road, but the little finger streets to the side, and it's so rural, everyone's like, I jog there. Sometimes it's like a patch box almost, and it's really dry in the summer. So I think that working on issues with regard to primary response route with Atherton touches on all three, I think three of them is primary response routes, Menlo Field, El Camino, and Alameda, and Atherton touches on all three. So I thought that we could start before, and hoping that we can continue that. I think that is a big problem, or it could be a big problem for us as a fire district, but on an emergency response. Let's go on to item three, which is the alarm notification system, Harold?
So the district purchased the trailer, it's got the LRAD system on it, it's called Long Range Acoustical Device. And what it is, it's a, it's a, it's not a siren, it has a learning capability like a siren or a tone system that's in it, you can set different tones. But one of the things that it has that's, we think is very helpful is the voice. So, you know, at, at very high levels, you can use this app. So, I just talked to our folks today, I gotta get with Joel, I think they're working with you, or at least APD are part of this, which is, on Walsh Road, we're gonna do a test with the new system to see if we can upgrade and move the existing system or maybe add to the existing system up on Walsh Road, through your last point about Walsh Road being a concern. Then we'll move down, we're actually gonna do a project along San Francisco to the creek to see where these notification systems need to be located there as well. The trailer's expensive, we didn't buy it to use really as a, as the, for the purposes of putting it as a device as much as it was meant to be the testing module to drive around town, put it up and see, okay, well, you know, how far can you hear it from here, based upon, as you know, in Atherton, you got a lot more vegetation and trees versus other parts of town where you may or may not have that, they're lower lying, they won't wind, maybe they're not on the time of the day. So the trailer allows us to kind of move it throughout the district and figure out where these devices need to be. It's about a third of the cost of what the trailer would be, which is about a hundred fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment. So it's about thirty to fifty thousand dollars for a fixed unit per side. And depending upon who you talk to, it's roughly a square mile area that you can hear this device from, depends on which way it's oriented, which kind of vibe. But that would then have that power and then some type of a notification system. You know, these things are, can be set to a certain range, and we saw in Hawaii, we probably don't want anybody to, you know, get into our system. So we would want to encrypt it, similar to what we're doing up on Walsh Road. Obviously, APD or this bad center, whether it's county, APD or both, we have that capability. What's the benefit for those in the audience, and maybe for those in the council, because I know many of you came out and took a look at this thing before, and now we have it? Well, you know, the FAE that we're seeing is mobile cellular technology. A lot of people put those devices maybe in their kitchen at night, they charge them up. They don't have a landline anymore, and they're just not being notified if there's a problem. And if they are being notified, if it's at night, maybe it's raining outside, so there's ambient noise that's, you know, higher than normal, we're just not hearing that notification. Now, nobody wants to get up three, four times a night to pick up their phone to look at it, because somebody's sending them a post or, you know, something else, a text, you know, a phone call. So many of the problems that we've seen up in the fire areas where the communities had an issue with evacuation was confusion, number one, because either they weren't in a system where they were gonna be notified, or number two, they never got a notification, any kind of notification, or number three, they received it, but their device wasn't in close proximity to them, and so they weren't aware of it regardless. So this system kind of helps to solve that other part, which is, you know, you can see, I think a lot of these communities that were affected are now starting to look at similar systems, if not the system that we have, because it makes a lot of sense to have a backup on notifications. You know that the laws are gonna be changing, it used to be you had to opt into a system. Looks like now the law's changed, you're gonna have to opt out of the system. So that means everybody who's got a mobile device is getting notified, which depends on what they send you, I mean, how many times they send you something, who uses it for what, could be a good thing or it could be kind of annoyance. But, you know, again, this is what's going on out there. The LRAD system, we're gonna start testing, I know they've been coordinating with APD. It won't just be specific to Walsh Road or the creek, we're gonna look through the entire district to see where could these be located. So that way, there's a secondary means of communicating with the community if something happens.
Chief, these are both very, very pertinent and timely items, and I appreciate you bringing them up. Obviously, they're not just Atherton issues, the district, right? And actually, in front of the district, is regional one. So can you just kind of brief us on what type of discussions you're having with the other jurisdictions that are in the, in the district? And what's happening regionally on response routes and alarm notifications?
Sure.
Other than SMS or your, SMC or?
So let me, let me go to the response routes first. You know, we're having, we're having the discussions with the different jurisdictions. As you know, you got a whole different, well, not a whole different, you got two thirds of the, or three out of five of the council members are different in the city of Menlo Park, so it may be a different field. The city manager is no longer there, Alex has moved on. I briefly talked to Scarlett about this. So in terms of routes, they have not, when I asked you to, you know, would you accept the routes? They haven't done that, but that may be something in the future that they would do. We're gonna approach them just as we're approaching you. We'll do the same in East Palo Alto. And, you know, in terms of regional around us, you know, you don't find, from my experience, I haven't seen the same level or desire to kind of articulate what the routes are. So for Redwood City and Portola Valley and Woodside, I haven't seen that same thing. It might be different for Woodside's Fire Protection District, because it is a little bit more rural. For Redwood City, for whatever reason, they don't, they haven't done what we've done, to say, these are the streets, and this is our, this is our primary response routes. You know, I know that there's, there's a little bit difference not having a fire district and being a department head and the city department with the fire department. So there may not be the same latitude to at least kind of advance things at that level. Part of why I know a concern for Redwood City is, and I'm not gonna speak for the fire chief, but I'll tell you, you know, most of the chiefs are concerned about the bigger routes. At the same time, when the cities can get grant funds to do different projects, sometimes the funding kind of overwhelms the other issues regarding, you know, or what are, what are we gonna lose when it comes to response? And maybe that same dialogue doesn't occur at the level that I would hope it would occur, only because now money's involved. So, and I'm not saying that's what's going on over there, but I know it's going on in different places just because it's a different, it's done a different way as a city function. So as a department head, you're competing in some ways against other departments that are trying to do different things. In terms of the LRAD system, I think we're seeing broad acceptance and actually a lot of interest. I know specifically from the city of East Palo Alto on having this type of a system, because there's a lot of concern about the creek and flooding and being a lower tidal area based upon vulnerability. As Director Jones mentioned, that fifty percent is within a flood inundation area, so there's always that concern. Menlo Park, again, it's been, and I know when Alex was here, he was interested in that. Chief Bertini and I had some basic discussions about it, nothing, you know, to any great depth. And then to the county, I meet with both my Caloguine and sheriff in the next two weeks separately. So we'll discuss what we're doing, and there's a big interest from Calo, or County OES, and what we're doing with the LRAD system. And then I can tell you that Sonoma County and X, Anaslos, and the Bender all reached back out to us to see if they could use our unit for demonstration purposes up in their counties to show what this system would do. And we, we didn't pay under fifty thousand dollars for the trailer, because we bought the demo model, which actually saved us some money, which is a good thing. And apparently, they haven't built the new demonstrator model yet. So they're, you know, they were wanting to use ours, I've heard back from them. But, you know, many of these other jurisdictions are very interested now on these secondary types of communication systems, just because you can't put all your eggs in one basket. And so, you know, what I see is eventually that we have to build out an entirely second network of, you know, notification systems, just like we've done with the rain gauges and other things with the county. Now, I'm gonna find out how far the county wants to step in. I know the county OES is interested, I know there's different efforts are put, but I think the district is the only one so far that's actually purchased a device to, for the purposes of actually going out and, you know, testing what could be done and how we would do it. And then the board does have some budget to purchase additional devices within the allocations that are given us, myself, to put towards buying fixed units.
And that's a, there is a problem with notifications.
Yeah, it's one of your.
Emergency routes and notifications is a regional issue. I mean, we got emergency routes for us to get out of town, and then everything is clogged outside of town. And it's just like when they had the floods or the dam issue of, you know, where the last year at Oroville, people got on the freeway and sat, where they were gonna get in and they did with water, okay? So you die in your home or you die on the freeway, come on. So, so I think it's a regional issue, and that's why I wanted to hear what we're doing. And of course, the majority of your, your constituents are in Menlo Park, and I would like to know what you're, what they're doing, and how receptive they are, because they're a big part of the.
Well, we haven't had a lot, just let me just, just comment, I mean, we're, I think we're in a different place with Menlo Park right now, and we're in the middle of scheduling a joint meeting with them. So hopefully, we'll be able to glean some information of what their desires are as well as what we're doing. So. But that, but that is.
We really appreciate that.
Okay, so just a little question, you were talking about the notification and alarms and stuff. I mean, I get SNC alerts all the time, I don't think I ever get that from a department. Do I have to give you my?
No, so we would do it through, we would not try and duplicate what the county's doing.
So you're not doing it now?
No, so LRAD is an audio, it's an audio system.
Yeah, no, but I'm a, you get notification from your phone, and your phone, because we can plug that in, like, because it's all very complex.
So, to the chair.
Yes.
Wait, 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 Rick.
Yeah, so I think this notification system is huge. It is the lesson of the last two years. And we have to take it into account, and Calfire has identified our hills as being exactly the same conditions as they, as existed in Bucount. I don't know if that's true, but I think that from Atherton's perspective, we definitely have a fire concern issue up Walsh Road. And we have that principally because there's only one exit. So I think this notification system, I agree with what Bill said, it's a regional issue. I know the county board of supervisors has said that this is the principal lesson from these two fire experiences over the last two years. And I hope they're gonna take leadership on it. And I recognize that the LRAD's a whole different deal, and this is, we're talking about some form of, you know, notification either over, over some telephone system really, because that's the only thing we have that connects people. And, and I think we as jurisdictions need to press that, because it's really a life or death issue for all of us. For, and, and I do feel concern about egress and ingress in the Walsh Road area, because there's only one out. And, well, there's only one out that's open to automobiles right now.
If there was an emergency, if there are two additional outs of the branch of tunnels under the freeway, as well as across the water park, so there is, there are multiple, and the residents up there do know.
That cars can go on.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, it, I mean, the residents have to be communicated with, who really know it. Anyway, it's an issue that I think is, this is a valid concern that we need to focus on. With, with respect to the audio notification, the biggest, I mean, I think that the, the audio notification system that we have up the Walsh Canyon is all about the Bear Creek Reservoir and the risk of flooding, which frankly, the biggest concern is that we have an elementary school right at the bottom of that drainage that all that water would go into. And I have stood at that elementary school when that system was sounded in a test. And it sounds like a small truck beep, beep, beep backing up. You have no idea what it is, and it's certainly not loud enough to raise great concern, at least not at Los Alameda School. So I think the idea of upgrading that, and it's only relevant if you upgrade it if the residents know what the tone opportunities mean, right? So their communication is critical here. But I think upgrading that is a really important thing.
And adding to it, because to your point, you know, we don't have, I think one isn't adequate up there. The one that we have certainly isn't adequate. Having one down the hill at Walsh now would probably be, maybe partnering with the school to put something up there would be the best way to do it. But, but again, we're gonna test that out, and, you know, now that we have a trailer with this piece of equipment on it, that's, that's the plan.
Just related to the, the system itself, one of the problems besides topography is the fact that modern construction really makes it sound, you know, the inside. And I know that as far as the notification component, it's the cell phone or an SMC type alert. But I don't think we should limit ourselves to just the narrow focus of a subtle of this. I think it's, I can be on cable and have my TV taken over by our, I think that there shouldn't be any avenue of alert that you don't hit as far as response. I think that the system should be tested. I grew up with this notification system, which was basically very near sheltered in place. But with that, not everybody's gonna know. And so you may be outside, you may be able to hear it, but those are gonna be the few people that actually, and it'll work better and obviously flatter topography.
Sure.
But I don't think the, the, you should be careful on the desensitization of how many times we do, we should be testing it, but we should also, like Rick and I were talking, I mean, how many S- talking, I mean, how many SMC alerts, then you stop looking, how many basic alerts, do you stop looking? You don't, you don't want to put somebody in that position where they don't see, you should have a unique response that comes over. And I don't care if it's red, white, blue, but something unique and somebody says, oh, this is not just one of those other alerts that the road's closed.
So NAPA has, NAPA has a siren for flooding. And when they did a survey after the big floods, you know, they asked the residents, you know, what, you, you deal with the phone alerts or you deal with the siren? And to the person, they said, when the siren goes off, we know it's time to go because it's, it's like the last thing, right? And so, you know, this won't be a siren per se, but it's going to be louder than that. I think, well, you could be in your insulated home and you may not hear it, but this thing's pretty loud as you guys know. And I think it's yet another, it's yet another device beyond a mobile device. It's, you know, like Elizabeth said, I think a lot of people don't have landlines anymore for variety reasons, whether it's cost or what have you. But, you know, that's an Achilles heel in one way. And equally, you know, this is yet another, it's a backup on a system that's, that's being expanded and will be more robust. But you're right, I don't look at every alert I get either because I get a whole bunch of them.
I'm looking at George.
If the LRAD system is going to use, I mean, a different voice as well as siren or something that's on the alert, the county's diverse and there's going to be multiple ones of these around, how are you going to handle or address multiple language requirements?
You know, there's, there's different, we'll look at population centers and all the demographics and, you know, add on as needed, but, you know, that's one thing, at least you could, you could alternate different messages in different languages if you need to.
So the nice thing about LRAD is you can program it yourself or they have fixed messages that they, you can buy from them programming.
I want to make three quick points. One, I agree that this is a regional issue. I'm not one of those people that believe that if you want to get something done and done right and quickly, it's worth taking leadership at a local level and proceeding. Rob and I attended a, a meeting with the county to discuss this and they, they were talking about it, but they didn't have any money and so they weren't going to do anything until they found money. So in about 10 years, maybe something would happen. Second thing is that the extension to this system are really exciting too. I, I was a member of the strategic planning committee last year. We met with, with something from the Shake Alert program at USGS where this could tie into the Shake Alert and give people 30 to 45 seconds of warning of an impending earthquake. And so that, that's an exciting extension beyond. The third point I want to mention is why are we talking about this jointly? There's disagreement about how this would happen, let me say that. But the question is, you know, who pays for it? Well, we do things jointly, you pay for it jointly and that's sort of the rule. This is something again where I think the district could take a leadership role. I am supporting the idea of the district paying for it to get it done. But it requires some things of jurisdictions and, and other entities, and that's a place to put some of these units. So we can clearly put them on our facilities, that we could do. Second thing is to put them on public facilities and jurisdictions would have a third would be other public entities like a school or something of that sort. Anything possible that certain buildings or, or, you know, certain businesses would, would block them as well, in which case they'd probably need to pay for maintenance and so forth. But I think the funding of something like this, they're not very expensive, $50,000. We probably could, I mean, we could do well with 20 or 30 of them. If we had 50 of them, I mean, we'd block the whole district. I, I think that this is not a huge sum of money to, you know, what we spend money on. So I, I think it's an exciting thing. I think at a minimum, we would be coming to Atherton and saying, we need some of your public facilities or public locations to block these things.
So Shake Alert is a system that we're currently working with. We'll have it, we have it in two stations, Station Six and Station Two. We have it publicly released and we're the only fire facilities in the northern part of the state that have done anything with this so far. We're trying to get it up and running. But what it does at the station is exactly what the Berstein is kind of alluding to the fact that it could do with an LRAD system, which is actually alert the community now. Before I say it can do that, it can do that with one caveat, that's only when the state of California says we can do that. So right now, the state is not, if you were to ask them if this system or any system like that were to be put in place, they're not authorizing it for public notification at this point. It's, it's fine for a building like a firehouse or they use it in bar to slow the trains or stop the trains, but currently they're not, they're not allowing it to be used for public notification. We're hopeful it's going to happen.
So there are no more comments? I mean, open up to public comment, I would choose.
Oh, we've got public, we, we bypassed anything, so any public comments, I have a name. We have Jim Lewis, a property owner in Meadow Park. The issue of the fire service fiscal review is one I've been following for quite some time and you know it. One thing that's baffled me during that time is why there's such a focus on the fire district versus a number of other organizations in which Athertonians pay into each year where there could be even greater potential savings. And it may be well to take a look at those to see if what you're trying to accomplish with a single entity could be done with one or more of the others. For instance, I suspect you paid far more into the school district than you received in benefits. You probably paid far more into the hospital district than you received in benefits. There's also the mosquito district. The state of California provides a number of services to you through your income taxes. Has there been a review or are you receiving your fair share of what you're paying into that program? Not to mention potential federal government services. To put it on a more local level, I know there's neighborhoods within Atherton that have asked whether they're getting their fair share of services from Atherton compared to other neighborhoods. And perhaps they should pay less property taxes into the city because they don't require as many services. And yet you don't follow those costs per neighborhood anymore than the fire district does within the five jurisdictions. Regarding the topic of emergency routes, I'd like to just highlight that at one time there was consideration of putting a lid under Atherton Channel. In the event of an emergency or maybe there's gridlock with cars, people are running or in their bicycles or on their skateboards, it'd be helpful to have a lid on the channel for them to try to escape ahead of the cars while they're waiting or turning into the freeway. So I don't know if you're going to review that topic, but it's one I suggest that might be helpful. Thank you. Last time regarding the notification system, I don't know if it's possible to use drones. I do know they have cameras, but if a number of drones could go from down neighborhood, particularly within geographical area, they make it difficult in other ways. Might be just one more tool, not solely, but in addition to the other thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Walter.
My name is Wolfers Leith. I live over in Linden. I thought this was a great meeting tonight. I applaud the two boards getting together, talking, that's the most important thing. Secondly, it seems to me that Rick's idea of having a subcommittee, you definitely need to go ahead with that. Thirdly, this is my last point, it strikes me as though many have cost studies, there are an awful lot of ways to do it. I don't know, but the best way to do it. Another way to consider this though is should the higher values of the area's properties be related to the cost that's incurred in protecting them? It's, it's, I think it's a whole different proportion. It's, as I see it, it may be negative to the Atherton residents, but it should be looked at as well. Thank you very much.
Are you taking public comment?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda. Only for things that are on the agenda. Okay.
He said it was classified and on the agenda.
Hi, I just wanted to speak to, trying to figure out how the costs versus per capita. I really don't like how that was used because if you think about Athertonians' sizes of their lots, number of trees, the number of structures, the size of those structures, you know, when you think about a five alarm fire, right, how many apparatus has to come to fight a fire that might be a structure that is very large and has some antique cars in it that might get burned up, needs bigger apparatus? Does the city of Atherton have the funds that they want to spend on to have a four-story building saved or a community saved that is very large? Do you really want to spend those kinds of funds to buy that one apparatus that you will use on occasion? Or do you want to use the resources that the district is able to provide to many people? Right? So I, I think you should think about that, that if you have five acres and you want to save it from either a fire like Valley Fire or just somebody being electric because their electrical lines were all, you know, mixed up, they had the octopus coming out of the wall. I think you should really consider that before you think about per capita.
I know this is probably not supposed to be small, but maybe you can, but, but you saw, into a little perspective, Atherton has disabled family residence and grants it some of the farm, quite a large. I think the largest one would be maybe 26,000 or something like that. You can compare that to the Frank Gehry building that was built for Facebook along Bayfront. Now, that is pretty darn big. Or you could compare it to the, all the high-rise condominium building on the corner of University Drive in Bel Airs or in Meadow Park, which is twice the size, where you can have a building 38 feet high. So you can't kind of compare the, I mean, it's just, you can't just say Atherton has big houses, all right? We only have houses. We only have 2,500 parcels, okay? And not every parcel. And some parcels are combined and so we don't have that many structures. Comparably speaking to our neighborhood in the park, comparatively speaking, in the Palo Alto, which has IKEA. That's a big building. So, you know, I, I hear what you're saying.
But you also swell the student schools, students from Sacred Heart, from college, from elementary school.
And we pay for all of the roads and the police protection of that, from our property tax revenue that we get a small portion of, okay? So all of those protections for all those schools, we don't own any of those schools. Okay? Meadow Park, Sequoia Unified, Meadow Park School District, and lots of them. So, Eric, Eric. I just had to.
Yeah, no, it's.
I just, I wanted to put it in.
Probably want to go back and forth, okay? This is, this is public comment and we don't really, you know, the, the boards are not supposed to comment on it, so it was okay on this one for clarification, unless not having back and forth. So any other public comment?
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
For sure.
So, okay. It's still not on the agenda. No? Okay. Coming to a council.
We only made that exception for Greg Conlin because he's our, you know, perpetual candidate.
No, at the end of this meeting, there's.
It says, it says public comment.
On the agenda. The agenda, the position of comment is for the special people, limited to things that are on the agenda.
Yeah. Public comment, if you have things that are not listed in the meeting.
This is.
It is publicly.
On our agenda, it's a, on this one.
Well. We can make these.
Go ahead.
It is an agenda item, so.
You don't have a 10-minute comment?
Yeah.
Or an item that is not on the agenda.
Yeah, this is for an item, not a agenda. Not sure if the fire district cares as much, but maybe it does because it's about the Speaker 50 and perhaps we will have four or five story buildings in Atherton. So I just wanted to follow up from my earlier email to the Atherton county council members. Probably the fire district members may not be aware, but it may not be that obvious. I sent you guys an email a week and a half ago about California Senate 50 zoning effects with respect to San Trans bus routes through Atherton. To recap, I reviewed the most frequent Atherton bus routes. I concluded that the SB 50 zoning rules would not apply to any of our towns, bus stops. None of Atherton's bus stops qualify because the stock frequency is too low. SB 50 has numerous conditions for what qualifies as a high-quality bus quarter. And because of that, they all must be met before any SB 50 zoning rules apply. So that's good, good news for us with respect to SB 50. This past Sunday, actually, San Trans updated their bus schedules and I reviewed those as well and no major schedule changes were made such that, so that, such that any of the item buses know that will fall under SB 50's tests for a high-quality bus quarter. Thus, the rail station is one and the only one, only transit stop within Atherton that could be subject to SB 50 if a word of passage is provided for. No other transit stop would be. And then I just had one other comment about the likelihood of, or unlikelihood of increased San Trans service through Atherton. This is very unlikely simply because Atherton, we're very close to the southern San Antonio County border and so that's kind of the edge of San Trans's territory. The bus service targets high population density areas and Atherton is certainly not that. Most of Meadow Park is not that. The part of Meadow Park that is where Facebook is building, they have a private bus system. And private buses are not open to the public and thus will not be subject to SB 50. And then also San Trans targets primarily those who are, many of those who are under privilege who don't have their own cars. And because they don't have their own cars, they need the buses as transportation systems. Whereas Atherton, Meadow Park area, a lot of single-family homes, a lot of people have cars, it's a very car-sensitive area. So what, and often, the last point I wanted to make was, San Trans has also seen a decline in recent years of ridership, so fiscal year 2015 through 2016. They've seen ridership fall 3%, the next year 8%, the next year 6%, and up to date to this fiscal year, it's 4% so far. So it's for those reasons I feel that San Trans would not be increasing bus service through Atherton so that SB 50 is not anywhere near future going to apply maybe that's coming up. So I just wanted to provide that clarification for the council, please. If there were any questions.
Thanks. That's really good research, thank you.
Public comment?
Any other public comments?
There are no more comments.
All right, you want to do a juror? So.
Home ground.
Thank you all for coming.